Our council meeting. Approval of the minutes.
Reading of the minutes of the council meeting on October 20th.
Do I have a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes?
Motion.
I have a motion by Councilman Johnson, seconded by Councilman Benton, all in favor.
Yea.
Any opposed? We have five yays, zero nays. Motion passes.
Approval of the minutes of the council meeting on October 20th.
Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion.
I have a motion by Councilman Johnson, seconded by Councilman Benton, all in favor.
Yea.
Any opposed? We have five yays, zero nays. Motion passes.
Reading of the minutes of the special meeting on November 3rd.
Do I have a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes?
Motion.
I have a motion by Councilman Johnson, seconded by Councilman Benton, all in favor.
Yea.
Any opposed? We have five yays, zero nays. Motion passes.
Approval of the minutes of the special meeting on November 3rd.
Do I have a motion to approve the minutes? I have a motion by Councilman Benton, seconded by
I actually believe that Councilman Wheeler talked earlier to me and she has an issue with some things.
Yeah, I was reading the minutes from that special meeting and there was a there's some information that was completely omitted, so I will not be approving.
Do you want to just amend the minutes?
I mean, it's pretty lumpy. The episode when when the Chief Secretary Tracy Woodall got up and was questioning about the budget, that whole episode is just completely omitted from the meeting.
You can't hear her.
She was right there.
So you didn't hear her, but when we when even the chief said that when the mayor insulted his employee, you didn't get that either? Okay. I will not be approving the minutes from this special meeting, so. Ms. Judy, if you can't hear, then just let us know.
We can there can always be an amendment, but we will have to I'm just making that suggestion.
We would have to go back and try and listen or something too.
All right.
Yeah.
So we do not have I have a do I have a motion to approve the the minutes? If there is no motion, then do I have a motion to put the minutes back on to the December 15 meeting? And I invite do I have a motion?
Yeah, to listen to, right, yes.
I have a motion by Councilman Johnson, seconded by
I'll second it.
Councilman Wheeler, all in favor.
Yea.
Any opposed?
If I can just ask too, is um
Can I finish the
Oh, I'm sorry.
We have five yays, zero nays. If anyone wants to send some comments to Ms. Johnson, please feel free. What did you want to add?
Well, remember when there was talk about the police budget and I know Ms. Woodall was sitting there and I know there was some kind of conversation in the back and I believe she was relaying some of the information regarding your budget. She and she had had the information present and when Ms. Tracy was asked to get up and speak, there was a question of, from the mayor, of exactly what type of budgetary experience Ms. Woodall had. And I personally found that extremely offensive and I don't think I was the only one about that. I've spoken to Tracy many a times and any time I've called her for a question pertaining to the police budget, she is Johnny on the spot and knows it all. And I just felt it was insulting.
Even though this isn't the appropriate time, I'd like to make a comment to that issue. By no means is there was any intention to create insult. Whenever I speak to the public, I make a point. If I'm talking about a budgetary issue or something referring to the law, I try to make it quite clear over and over again, I am not a CPA, I'm not an accountant, I'm not an attorney, and that I seek that advice. When anyone is speaking to our residents, many of them who do not know all the players in this room on a regular basis, who view our council meetings on TV or may, years from now, view council meetings that we will store on the website. I think it's important for everyone to know who is who, how are and what they bring to the table. I totally respect someone if they're telling me they've had been working on these budgets and their history, et cetera. But we're just trying to clarify for our residents so that everyone knows who everybody is.
Can I make a comment?
Please.
I've already said
We're kind of getting off topic, but that's fine.
But it's on topic, actually.
I'd already mentioned prior to that meeting, I have a staff. Captain Adams, Sergeant Gleber, Captain Savoy, and Ms. Woodall, my secretary, works on my budget, on our budget, the Harahan Police Department, on a regular basis. They all are very knowledgeable. I mentioned at the meeting, and they bring a lot to the table. Ms. Woodall got up to state to answer some questions and your first comment was, what is your your background in accounting? That's when I said it was inappropriate.
I didn't ask what her background is.
You started something that affected
What is your education? Do you have any education on budget?
About what she knew about the budget. And already, I'd already put that, prefaced that with my employees.
And Chief Walker? I have explained myself and
But it doesn't come across the way it came across at that meeting. You were trying to belittle her. I got up and said it was
That's not true.
inappropriate. Okay.
I take thank you. Communications.
The Board of Adjustments and Appeals did not meet in October and accepting the minutes of the Planning and Zoning Board on November 2nd.
Do I have a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the Planning and Zoning Board from November 2nd? I have a motion by Councilman Johnson, seconded by Councilman Thank you, by Councilman Bodie, all in favor.
Yea.
Any opposed? We have five yays, zero nays.
There are no resolutions?
We have to accept the minutes now. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes from the Planning and Zoning Board from November 2nd? I have a motion by Councilman Johnson,
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Bodie, all in favor.
Yea.
Any opposed? We have five yays, zero nays. There are no resolutions. Ordinances for approval. At this point, can we get City Attorney Bures on the phone?
I do not have it, so.
Can you give me a second? Present at the meeting, if you don't mind. Thank you. Councilman Council, everyone who's here, elected officials, City Attorney Bures is now on the phone for everyone. Would you acknowledge?
Present.
He's present.
I'm here.
Thank you. All right. We are now doing ordinances for approval.
This is proposed ordinance number 2016-15. The following ordinance was proposed by Councilman Johnson and seconded by Councilman Bodie. This proposed ordinance was referred to the Planning and Zoning Board for their recommendation and the Planning and Zoning Board met on this proposed ordinance on November 2nd at 7:30 PM and by a 4-1 vote, the motion passed to recommend this ordinance as written. And the council, y'all have the November 2nd zoning board minutes in your pocket. And proposed ordinance number 2016-15, an ordinance to amend ordinance number 13 ordinance 1333, Section 15, relative to the zoning classification in U. Nonurban Badger District, Harahan Municipal Code 1990, Appendix A, by adding thereto a new subsection governing the hours of operation of commercial enterprises therein and to otherwise provide with respect thereto.
Do I have a motion to open a public hearing?
Motion.
I have a motion by Councilman Wheeler, seconded by Councilman Johnson, all in favor.
Yea.
Any opposed? We have five yays, zero nays. We are now open to public hearing. We during this, these sections, you can only speak to the current ordinance. Thank you very much. I don't have my timer now available.
John Ream, three run pass.
If you just give us a moment.
Oh.
Councilman Wheeler's helping us.
Three minutes.
Thank you.
Okay, John Ream, three run pass. The residents of Harahan do not want all-night dump truck, excavator, front-end loader, and crane operations from 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM, beeping all night long. These operations generate noise and uncontrolled sand and diesel engine emissions. The residents of Harahan are tired of hearing loud beeping, horn blowing, and truck, excavator, and front-end loader engine noise all night. All-night operations of the dump trucks, cranes, front-end loaders, and excavators is a nuisance to the Harahan residents, disturbing the peace, violates the laws of decency, and obstructs the reasonable or comfortable use of property. The sand company, which works all night long, now has three other sand pits from which it can run its nighttime operations. Wagamun, Hornville, and Lower Algiers that's not around in a populated area. They choose to come to Harahan and abuse the Harahan residents. The history of the Harahan zoning ordinance demonstrates that in the 1988 lawsuit which Wood and Marines, at the time, filed against Harahan, which Harahan won, it was stated that the history of Harahan zoning ordinance demonstrates that the Board of Alderman reasonably concluded the containment of further commercial development on the Badger which furthers the community's interest in maintaining the city's residential qualities, which is lost now with this beeping all night long. The ordinance freezes private commercial development at its present stage, not all-night operations, preserving the status quo and thus logically protecting Harahan's existing neighborhoods. This is a travesty that we're going through right now. This should never have happened. It should never have started. Knowing the problems, the nighttime operations of dump trucks, excavators, and front-end loaders and cranes has caused the community of Harahan, why would it continue, this company continue, knowing it is disturbing the peace by the constant loud beeping, horn blowing, truck noises, and more uncontrolled sand blowing in the community? Is that a good neighbor? And here's the attorney is over here. We can ask him when he comes up. Because he's going to file a suit against Harahan.
Anyone else wishing to address the council?
Thank you. I'd like to.
Remi Donnelly, counsel for Wood Materials. Just as we've kind of been asking all along, you know, we strongly encourage you not to pass the ordinance and let's get to the table and try to work something out instead of this matter having to be resolved, you know, in a courtroom. I mean, as it still stands, this ordinance would be very arbitrary. I mean, you're singling out one company.
Please, I'm going to ask that. Thank you, sorry.
We would be singling out one specific company, one specific operation in this entire city and you've arbitrarily selected an hours of 6:00, you know, PM to 6:00 AM. You know, I you could sit down and agree or disagree on the hours, but I mean, there's other points in your own ordinance that have different hours of operation for daytime. You know, end of the day, this would have an effect on the value of their property, there's no doubt about it. Woods has talked to in a commercial appraisal, you know, the encumbrance would affect value and they've already speculated that it could be a million dollars. And that's just the value of the land. That's not the loss of economic use, which they will have because they will not be able to potentially bid for work that requires, you know, later nighttime operations, you know, beyond in those hours. And also, I think, which the big thing that's being missed here is this operation has been going on, you know, they have had nighttime work and this is, you know, a grandfathered situation. So if you choose to even go in to enforce this against Wood, I mean, then we, you know, we're also in a litigated matter to affect our, you know, grandfathered status. And I'm asking the council, you know, and you all, let's just step back and, you know, I understand there's anger, I understand there's hurt, and let's find a way to resolve it that can keep us out of a courtroom. I just think that would be best for everyone and for the city itself. I think we can come to a resolution, you know, it may not be the one that everybody wants, you know, but maybe we can find something, some kind of common ground that just works out. And that's why I would ask you to not pass the ordinance and let's get hard to the drawing board and come up with something. Thank you.
Mr. Donnelly, I have a question. You might not know the answer, but when do you anticipate the nighttime work to stop? Is this forever? Is this in perpetuity? Is this for the project for the airport? When do you anticipate night work to stop?
The current night work is related to the airport project and from what I understand, it should be wrapping up in the near future.
What's the near future mean?
I don't have an exact timeframe on it, you know, to provide you tonight, but I understand it's
I was told that it was estimated to be at the end of November, mid-December.
Okay.
But what I hear you stating is they've done it prior to this project and you want them to have the ability to continue to do this in the future?
That's correct.
Okay, so we're talking about a project. I know the mayor had made some comments at the last meeting that this is getting ready to stop anyway. This project will be over, but you as their attorney representing them are stating to the citizens that you want them to be able to continue nighttime work forever?
That they would lose the opportunity to bid on projects like the airport work if they, you know, they don't have the opportunity to work.
Have you had other operations prior to the airport project that you were doing 24/7 work?
They have had nighttime operations.
And when was that and for how long?
Um, they sent me a list of the projects on my phone, but that, you know, for the past 15 years, there were other projects that required nighttime work.
How many?
And these are requirements by the people, you know, the project work. This is not something that, you know, they
And in that 15 years, how many projects and over what course of time?
Uh, I think it was like four to six projects with the listings.
And did those projects last for a week, a month, a day?
Varied, you know, varied.
So nothing as long as the airport project?
Uh, I don't know that for a fact. No, I don't.
And how many sites do y'all have?
They currently have four sand pit sites, I believe, now. They just added a new one in Algiers just recently. I don't know if that one's up in
Are the other ones in a residential-type neighborhood or?
Um, there are residences near, I mean, some of the other pits. Yes, I do think they are. I mean, I don't know the exact makeup of the neighborhoods, but I think there are residential areas within, you know.
And so you are telling us, though, that you have not consistently had nighttime operations over the last 15 years?
No, we have had nighttime operations.
No, you have not constantly, every single day, had nighttime operations.
Not every single day, no.
Right.
Sporadic.
Sporadic.
Mr. Donnelly, can I just make two points, just two points, and I'm not going to be derogatory in any way. I met with Mr. Woods in early, in the summertime. They said they would be moving a hall road. They had plans to move the hall road and the hall road still hasn't moved. The Reams have been coming here for a long, long time, what, a year at least?
A year and three months.
You know, so it's hard to, you know, I understand that. I want you to put yourself in their shoes for a second. They come in here, they build a brand-new home. The house is beautiful. That's what we want here. We want people to come in and build brand-new homes. Now their house is covered in sand, covered. And I'm telling you, I mean, not only their house, my house is blocks away and I got sand all in my pool, it's all in my house, but I'm not worried about me. I'm worried, I mean, I look at them, they are covered in sand. It's all day, all, that's gotta be some kind of health risk. The pollutants that are coming down from every single state by the time they hit that river goes airborne, it's gotta be terrible. And for us, and if you could imagine yourself waking up every day with your brand-new car, your brand-new house covered in sand, and that's just one incident. It's terrible. And I feel like the Woods could have done something about this a long time ago. A year ago, Mr. Reams came in, very quietly stood at that podium and asked for some help. Now, it's blown up into this big old nightmare and it's a shame. It's a shame for you and a shame for us.
And I must say, I'm very disappointed that during special presentations, that that special presentation was canceled by Wood Materials. I would have appreciated
I can explain.
to have the opportunity to ask very specific questions about the hall road permitting, progress, et cetera.
Well, I know on the hall road, we are still waiting for the final permit from the court. I understand that could be six to more, eight weeks until they issue it. But that we are waiting for that and it should be forthcoming on the permit.
One more point I'd like to make. When you leave out of here today, just go that way. I'm telling you, it looks like, it's like a fog. It's that bad. And I understand, and I, give me wrong, I'm a businessman and I really appreciate business, and I could understand, I'm going to tell you, it probably ain't all coming from you. There is some stuff coming. There's the other competitor there. There's pumped in a river, which of course, you know, opened a lot of ways, opened that one, opened in the past, but it's still there. And if I was to take a wild guess, it's probably 80% yours. And it is crazy. I mean, I just to see it, and I'm only telling you as a human being, not as a legal, not as a councilman, but as a human being. I mean, I'm looking at these people and I'm going, holy schneikes, this is the worst thing I've ever seen. This might be the worst thing I've seen sitting up here as a councilman for 10 years.
And remember, and remember, this ordinance is on top of that. They can't sleep at night.
Yeah, oh yeah, I'm tired. And I just want the Woods, and even you, put yourself in your shoes. Now, I know this is probably going to end up in litigation. I know where you're going with it. So, but I want someone, I want them to be a good neighbor, man. I want their business here. I don't want them to go, I don't want to shut them down. But there's a million things they can do to stop this and they haven't done one.
Right. And this came up once before and we postponed it because we thought we would be able to negotiate and that was, what, April? And here it is, November, and for the past at least few months, people haven't been able to sleep. Dump trucks are going up, the slamming of the back gate, the beeping. You could go right outside, probably right now, and you hear the beeping all the way here. I mean, that, these are people that are trying to survive, trying to get this date to get to work, make sure their kids get to sleep, and they're not able to do it. This was brought up, like I said, back in April, I believe it was, I'm pretty sure it was. But we had opportunity from there to here to try and negotiate something. And it's a shame that we have to keep bringing this up because if they want to be good neighbors, they should be doing something.
Well, I would ask for, you know, the opportunity to try to work that out. I mean, I, we thought this thing was going away is because of the legal issues that this ordinance presents. I mean, if you all are willing to sit at the table with us and we can work out a solution.
But we had till April to sit at the table and try and work it out. Nothing was ever done.
I understand.
Unfortunately, I'm not speaking for everyone, but for myself, it's a little too late to be asking to sit down at a table.
I've also received no official response, legal response as an offer, contractually, et cetera, to say what Wood Materials is willing to put on the table and willing to formally do. I have not, I am not in receipt of anything from your company.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're continuing with address the council?
In response to Remi's wanting to come to the table, they want to come to the table and say, we want to work all night. They're not going to move on that. So if you go to the table with them, that's what you're going to get. We want to work all night. You have to let us. So it's just totally ridiculous. It's it's lawlessness is what it is. Thank you for your comments. We're asking the council to vote for amendment to ordinance 1333, restricting hours of operation on Badger. We're addressing Wood Materials because they are here addressing this amendment. Wood Materials is here and will try to convince the council not to vote on ordinance. But if council votes for amendment, then Wood Materials will file a lawsuit against the city of Harahan, which the company attorney stated at the September 22nd, 2016 council meeting. How can any company sue the city for not letting them make terrible noise and more airborne sand all night long? I can't imagine a judge giving them favor. Wood Materials only cares about what they want. They do not care about the residents of Harahan or the city of Harahan. Do not let Wood Materials bully the city of Harahan with a lawsuit. Stand up and be strong on protecting your residents. Wood Materials is breaking the law all night with noise and it needs to stop. Wood Materials will never allow the activity their own company causes day in and all night to Harahan residents to ever happen across the street from their homes. But Wood Materials mainly allows their company to ruin the quality of life of Harahan residents with their continual actions of noise and bad air quality. We don't know how the owners of Wood Materials can lay their heads on their pillows in their quiet and clean homes, knowing that company is destroying the peace, sleep, and environment of the Harahan residents. We just don't understand how they could know that they are disturbing sleep and peace of others and just do not care. That is just not normal. People have a step, have to step over their own God-given conscience to act this way. All-night work on the Badger has ruined the Harahan residents' sleep and peace. How can anyone make noise all night and be above the law? Wood Materials sits here today making promises that they do not keep, to try and get what they should not be asking for, to further ruin the residents of Harahan's quality of life. Wood Materials has known since January 21st, 2016 Harahan council meeting, that Harahan residents did not want night work. Wood Materials never held a meeting with Harahan residents about running all-night work in Harahan community. Wood Materials needs to leave Harahan's sand pits and use their three other sand locations, which are not near large community. Do not let Wood Materials try to bargain the hall road to keep their ability to work all night. No company on the Badger should be allowed to run large noisy equipment all night long.
That's the time.
Thank you. I have, I could have said more, you know that, but I think you know all of it already. And I appreciate every one of you for supporting this ordinance. Sue Benton, I would, you know, I didn't understand that you brought forth an ornament to trust this and then you had to take it away, but now you won't vote for this one. You know, I understand, you say you can't, but I think you should anyway.
Thank you.
Hello. I got to start coming to these meetings often. Holy cow. This is entertaining. Jason Bruzick, 7204 Stoneley. And I stood up here because I was listening to the folks talk and then I heard this gentleman speak. And my first question, and I realize he probably doesn't want to answer me, but since when can you grandfather out from underneath of a judgment? Since when is a judgment not binding? Just because it gets old doesn't mean it goes the heck away. It's still there. So if that's a judgment, guess what, buddy? You're in trouble. There's a thing called contempt, contempt of court. And let me tell you, folks, if Harahan has a copy of that piece of paper and goes to a court, you're going to have a good time. You're going to have a good time with it. But I also want to address the sand and the noise. Folks, it's a real problem. And he said he wants to come to the table? Okay. When was the last time you came and washed my car? What have you done for my community? Ever. Ever. You haven't. I've been here for two years. My son has asthma. Y'all have heard me jump up and down about my son. He spent a week in ICU 18 months ago because he has asthma and he had an acute attack. Guess who I'm looking at now? Guess who I'm looking at? Because I'll tell you what. It's not okay. You guys could have done so much to fix this problem before ever got here and you failed to. So now you're threatening lawsuit. Your veiled threats really don't carry a whole lot of weight with me. Because you know what? I like to do what's right. And I hope that this council does too. And I can say definitively that anytime you try to say some word like grandfathered out from underneath of a judgment, anytime you try to have hidden words to say that you're going to file a lawsuit, all I can say is, do you know how incredible and large the class action suit would be for nuisance against your company? I mean, just massive. Think about that before you make your threats. Thank you. That's all I got to say.
Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion.
I have a motion by Councilman Johnson, seconded by Councilman Wheeler, all in favor.
Yea.
Any opposed? We have five yays, zero nays. Council discussion.
I do want to just say one thing. Ms. Reams said she didn't understand why I can't vote for this and I am abstaining from it because I was part-owner of a company that had composting. And since then, that has been resolved and I'm no longer part-owner of that company. However, I rent a piece of vacant land to a company that uses it specifically for composting. So if I were to vote for this, it could end up undermining what we're trying to do here. So I'm abstaining because I think it's for the betterment of the city and of this the city and of this process.
Anyone else?
Uh, just what I stated, uh, to Mr. Remy is that we've had since April to come to the table and try and work out a deal, and it hasn't been done. And, I mean, i-if, if litigation has to be it, and we have to go through this process, then we have to protect our citizens.
Anyone else? Um, do I have a motion to proceed with the vote to approve the ordinance?
Motion.
I have a motion by Councilman Johnson, seconded by Councilman Wheeler. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed?
I abstain.
We have four yays, one abstention. Ordinance passes.
Proposed ordinance number twenty-sixteen dash eighteen. The following ordinance was proposed unanimously by the council of the city of Harahan. Uh, this proposed ordinance was referred to the Planning and Zoning Board for their recommendation as well, and the Planning and Zoning Board met on this proposed ordinance on October tenth at seven-thirty PM, and by a five-oh vote, the motion passed to recommend this re-subdivision. An ordinance approving the re-subdivision of four oh one Oak Avenue, lots one, two, and three, Square J, Harahan City subdivision, city of Harahan, parish of Jefferson, state of Louisiana, made by Dating Marquez and Associates LLC, dated September nineteenth, twenty-twelve.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Motion.
I have a motion, motion by Councilman Johnson, seconded by Councilman Wheeler. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? We have five yays, zero nays. Motion to open the public hearing. Anyone who would like to come and speak to this ordinance, please come up, state your name and address. Do you have the timer?
Yes, my name is, uh, Melvin Gregorius. Uh, I live in Dustine, Louisiana. Uh, I'm representing, uh, the families of Ralph Scheck Snyder and his sister, Alvina Ladner. Um, this deals with, they have two houses on three lots, and the, uh, basically, we're asking y'all to approve this so we can divide the property between the two different families. Um, I guess that's about it. I mean, this, just simple as that. It's, we need to separate the property so-
You have two houses, you want two properties. Right.
Makes sense.
Thank you.
That's all I got.
Thank you. If there's no one else to speak to this ordinance, do I have a motion to close to the public?
Motion.
I have a, uh, motion by Councilman Johnson, seconded by Councilman Wheeler. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? We have five yays, zero nays. Uh, it is, public hearing is now closed. Council discussion?
No discussion.
See that there's no council discussion? Do I have a motion to proceed with the vote to approve the ordinance?
Motion.
I have a motion by Councilman Johnson, seconded by Councilman Bodie, all in favor to approve this ordinance?
Yes.
Any opposed? We have five yays, zero nays. Ordinance passes.
All right. Proposed ordinance number twenty-sixteen dash nineteen. The following ordinance was proposed by Councilman Bodie and seconded by Councilman-
I'll second.
By-
Which one? Who's second?
I think Ms. Hewitt said first, by, by, by us.
Carrie?
Will-
I'd just like to mark it down.
You're not first, you're last.
Right.
An ordinance to amend the Harahan municipal code by adding to chapter two, article one, a new section to be designated section two dash six establishing a convenience fee of two point four nine percent for payment of city charges by electronic means, and a new section to be designated section two dash seven establishing a two-dollar technical fee upon all permits, licenses, and charges imposed by the city of Harahan, authority for payment of city charges.
Do I have a motion to open a public hearing?
Motion.
I have a motion by Councilman Johnson, seconded by Councilman Wheeler. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? We have five yays, zero nays. Motion passes. Anyone who would like to speak to this ordinance, please come up to the podium. If there is no one who would like to come up, uh, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion.
I have a motion by Councilman Johnson, seconded by Councilman Bodie. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? We have five yays, zero nays. Public hearing is officially closed. Council discussion?
Just as I stated to Councilman Bodie, I called him earlier about this to ask him a couple of questions, and, um, I'm pretty much for it. You, when people pay by credit cards, we have to pay a fee. So, in order to stay neutral, we have to implement a charge.
And Mayor, let me ask you a question. You announced today that the online payments for taxes will start this year. Will that technical fee-
We're moving forward with it.
No, will the fee apply for people making online payments this year?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other council discussion? Do I have a motion to proceed with the vote to approve the ordinance?
Motion.
I have a motion by Councilman Johnson, seconded by Councilman Bodie. It should've been Bodie first, if you all forget. Sorry. Um, all in favor to approve?
Yes.
Any opposed? We have five yays, zero nays. Ordinance passes.
Proposed ordinance number twenty-sixteen dash twenty. Uh, the following ordinance was proposed by Councilman Hewitt and seconded by Councilman-
I'll second.
Wheeler. An ordinance as amended of the Harahan City Council, admitting chapter fifty, motor vehicles and traffic of the Harahan municipal code by adding article for electronic enforcement, speed limit enforcement, sections fifty to a hundred through fifty to one hundred and six, to provide for the enforcement of certain traffic signal violations by automated means, and provide for civil penalties for traffic signal violations enforced by automated means.
I've asked Mr. Ed Kraus to join us at the dais today. Um, Chief, if you would let him use your microphone, if you don't mind. I have a few questions. Um, Mr. Ed Kraus, we are, we have announced is our, uh, CIO. I am gonna be giving him a thousand percent raise. He work, he volunteers for the city. So, um, thank you very much for all you do. I've asked him to look at all our procedures, um, as it pertains to IT. Um, I would like him to reintroduce himself to the council, to our citizens, and tell us a little bit about yourself and your professional background.
I appreciate that, Mayor. Um, yes, I retired about three months ago and decided to volunteer my time to the city. Um, a, a chief information officer is someone that really oversees all of IT processes, uh, anything related to implementing a new system. So, I'm trying to, you know, establish my, my face and my voice to the council, so as we go forward with things, I'm gonna be involved with, uh, including, you know, speed cameras if that does go forward. My, my background, first of all, I have a, a degree in computer science, I have a degree in business, and I also attended law school. I've been, uh, in the IT industry for over thirty-five years, and past twenty-four, I've been in consulting, and I was a senior executive with the largest consultant IT firm in the world. Um, I've, I've done, I've over seen hundreds of projects related to, um, the federal government, state government, utilities, you know, you name it. So I'm, I'm very familiar with, um, you know, implementing systems, implementing them on time, under budget, et cetera. And so as the mayor explained, I'm trying to establish a process that we all can follow, hopefully from this point forward, when we introduce, uh, a new project such as the speed cameras.
I'd also like to make note, it's not your intention to endorse-
No.
-or not endorse an ordinance or project, just offer your professional opinion and your assessment, correct?
Exactly. I'm totally agnostic, and as the mayor, and I think the chief will tell you, I will give my opinion, whether it's, um, wanted or not, and it's gonna be an opinion that I think is the right thing to do. I'm also a citizen of Harahan, have been for over forty-five years, but you probably haven't seen my face because I've been traveling around the world for the past twenty-five years.
In light of your professional experience, um, can you please provide us an assessment of the correct process we would need to follow for this ordinance?
Um, what, I think you have in front of you is a, a proposed process map. It looks like this. And basically what it is, and I've, I've put it together somewhat in a rushed fashion, but I'd like to establish this for all new systems going in. And so this is an example of what I think we should do-
Tape change.
All right, we're good.
We're on.
Good. So, i-if you look at the first page on chart one, um, what I'm laying out is an example, if the ordinance is approved tonight, um, what I'm recommending is to, to go through a process and, and try to understand where we are and picking a vendor, and whether or not an RFP is needed, uh, issue the RFP, and of course, when that's received, go through a proper selection process. Once a vendor is selected, costs are known, on the next page, you'll see, that's when you bring it back to the council for approval. And, you know, we have to follow some very rigorous project plans and timelines for any project that we do. And one thing I can discuss later, as a mayor, will tell you that I'm a firm believer in everything that we're currently doing within IT, you know, follow plans, make sure we're having fully staffed, and we have the budget to do it. Operational plans as well. As I read the ordinance, there will be some, uh, changes to, to the chief's, um, staffing, I guess, around monitoring and approving, uh, the tickets. So, that should be part of the review and implementation plan. Uh, from there, implementation of hardware, and also there's, like, one piece, I, I think I, um, briefly spoke to Councilwoman Hewitt about, we're gonna have to have an interface to one of our current systems, which is Digicom. Um, not sure if that's gonna be large or not. I'm assuming it's gonna be a simple interface. Uh, in addition, we're probably looking at having to upgrade our current server. Um, our, the server that the police department is on is fairly old. We're, you know, use budget money to replace that. That'll have to be done before we move forward on this as well. So there, there are some operational issues that need to be addressed and cost associated with it. You know, I could throw out a number. Um, it would be a guesstimate at this point. I would see, say, upwards in the neighborhood of thirty to forty thousand on our end, besides whatever vendor is gonna supply. And on the last chart, um, the other piece that really hasn't been done with any system that I've seen Harahan implement in the past, and that is proper testing. Um, we, we have a system in place now that was, was put in. Uh, it was based on another city's user requirements, and it was done over six, seven years ago. We're still running into problems every day 'cause it wasn't properly implemented and tested. And then from there, you know, we approved any, any test. We're gonna have to do, as you know, uh, rigorous marketing of, of the lights and how they applied to the city, and then move into production. So, what I'm doing with this, and it, you know, I'd welcome any comments either now or in the future, is if we can follow a process like this for this project and any project that we bring forward.
Can you, um, over the last several months, you've done an assessment of the city of Harahan's, um, information technology. Um, it, it was a very thorough assess-assessment. Can you provide a brief overview and some of the problems that you have-
Um, I will. And-
Identified.
After this discussion tonight, I will send everyone, including the chief, a copy of this assessment. Uh, I sent it to the mayor in, in an email form. Um, what I did is looked at every system that we're currently using. I looked at maintenance contracts to see how much we're paying for maintenance, which is outrageous. Uh, I'm in the process of renegotiating our maintenance cost on everything that we, we do now.
And that's taken an extraordinary, large amount of time to even get that done.
Exactly.
We've been working diligently that for several weeks.
Two, two and a half months, yeah. I mean, it's been a-
Two and a half months, yeah.
And, you know, as a consultant, that's one thing that we did working with clients is, of course, is, you know, vendors, um, may have a good product, but they wanna sell you that system. Uh, they also wanna charge you a maximum amount of maintenance fees for a number of years, you know, into the future. I wanna be able to, to help, um, negotiate those contracts so we get extremely low, somewhat because of my legal background and also because of, you know, my systems background. But getting back to the assessment, um, and of course, when I sent this to the mayor, I know she, uh, must've, uh, squinted, but-
I didn't like our grade.
Yeah. On a scale from A through F, A of course being best, I currently graded the city at D-plus. And I was being generous. Our systems are in not good shape at all. Our accounting system today, which is called N-code by Tyler Technologies, which is an outstanding system, and it's been in place for eight, eight years, I believe, has not had one upgrade, none, since the day we bought it. But on top of that, they've been charging us twenty-five percent maintenance to do nothing. So, uh, we, we have to get it upgraded-
For example, without doing the upgrades on that financial software system, we are using more man-hours. It's more difficult to get work done because of the lack of upgrades.
Yeah. We, we're currently using the software for accounting. Nicole uses it for taxes. You know, we use it for HR, payroll, et cetera. And, um, I, I think, you know, the chief, for example, or the council would love to be able to pull up budget reports, you know, at, at any point in time and really see what we're doing. Some of that problem has to do with old software, and the report writer is fairly antiquated. So, what I'm recommending is we upgrade as soon as possible. I've negotiated that we can upgrade and they will not charge us a dime, because we've been paying maintenance fees for all this time. But it's gonna require training with all of our staff, including, uh, the chief's staff. And, uh, so we're, we're trying to schedule to get that done before the end of the year. That's one example. The second example is our website is extremely old as well. Uh, as a matter of fact, and once again, Nicole can attest to this, we have a hard time even uploading the minutes, uh, or putting videos out, or, you know, putting, uh, other reports, uh, because it's just old and antiquated. We, we currently pay a third party to manage it. Uh, it's fairly expensive to do that. So, once again, what I'm recommending is that we rewrite this website as soon as possible, probably in early two thousand seventeen, with something that is much more user-friendly, that we can control ourselves. The police department can put their own information out without having to go to a third party to do it, and we're, we're currently estimating what the cost will be. But I'll tell you, it's something that we have to, and it also frequently goes down. Uh, one other point, I know we need to get on with the vote, but, um, off-site backup. We currently back our systems up every night, uh, but we don't do any off-site backup, which is a major red, red flag to me, 'cause if we lose this building, we lose everything that we have in the city. So, I propose, uh, to the mayor that we do this as soon as possible, and that's do an off-site backup to the cloud. Uh, it's fairly inexpensive, somewhere in the neighborhood of ten thousand dollars at most, but, and to implement the process, write the code, and, uh, you know, install it. But we have to do it. If we don't do it, we could be in a, a load of trouble.
And data management is coupled with that.
Exactly. Uh, document imaging is another major issue. If, I'm sure, in the office that I'm currently occupying, we have, I think it's ten or twelve file cabinets, and that's just the tip of the iceberg. Every document that we currently have is in paper form, and I believe for the most part, in the police department, there are as well. There are some documents that are imaged.
How much time do you, I, I'm not trying to really hold you down to quantify it. How much time is lost on the- How much time is lost on the city's behalf on a small workforce managing our records and using the information technology that we have?
You mean overall?
Overall.
Or just on imaging?
Just overall.
Tremendous amount of time, you know.
It makes most tasks near impossible, correct?
Absolutely. There are a lot of workarounds, you know.
Just doing the city's audit.
I'd say, yeah, the city's audit could be so much easier if the departments could input their own budgets and so forth, and then an audit is done, where they just, you know, I've seen audits and been involved with audits where everything was done electronically, and then they just went and had questions for department head. But it's just so much easier if we can...
So by not making these investments, we're really...
We're at a big risk, and, you know, we're doing things still in the 50s. But to finish my point on the documents, everything we do is paper. And once again, what I'm recommending is that we go to a document imaging application, one that we can scan all the documents, put them in the computer, have them organized by whether they're, you know, accounting files or whatever.
Multiple file cabinets.
Yeah. And that's one that we, I'd like to see done in early 2017. Once again, the cost of that is not extremely expensive.
But these issues, how do you see them directly impacting this ordinance, again, to come back to this ordinance?
I'm sorry, say it again.
How do you see the issues that you've identified impacting this ordinance?
Well, I don't know if they directly impact except for the court system, and we're going to have to create an interface.
Which we've had difficulties.
The court system we have today is an operational system that was implemented some time back, Digicom, but we constantly have issues with that application. So we're going to have to work with that vendor to write an interface.
Okay.
Bottom line is, I will send this report to everyone. You can look at it. You have questions, call me. But the state of our, the health and wellness of our IT applications and business processes are very bad.
And so it would make implementing this, before we address a few issues at least, to implement this ordinance would be a little difficult unless we, I'm just trying to...
It sounds like a lot of assumptions here. And, you know, I'm no contract writer or negotiator, but I would assume as a businesswoman that if I sat down with a vendor I chose after RFP or RFQ, and we came to the table to negotiate a contract, and I had an interface fee of $10,000, I might put that burden on the person I'm trying to do the contract with. So I appreciate, Mr. Kraus, your comments, and I know that the mayor's trying to guide you into saying that the cost would be very burdensome to...
No.
All I'm trying to get to is to try and ask Mr. Kraus to state numbers may be very difficult, and at this point in time, it's a lot of assumptions.
Excuse me, Councilwoman. The mayor's not guiding me, and we have not had discussion, and no one guides me through a discussion.
I'm just watching the back and forth.
Well, I know. But I'm answering her questions. If anyone else has questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Guiding.
So I'm not anyone's puppet, but...
I didn't say that, sir.
No, I'm saying it. But the bottom line is this, I think you're absolutely right. You can have those negotiated with the vendor. They could, and that's what I would do.
Correct. The cost would be on them.
Right. But it would have to be negotiated.
And my other question is, have you had the opportunity, you assessed the city's IT situation, have you had the opportunity to assess the police department?
The operation?
Their IT systems over in the police department?
Only through discussions with Sergeant Nick and the chief and with Tracy and Captain Butch.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? I just wanted him to be able to put his expertise, give us some guidance.
I, I'll make one other comment. I've requested two or three times to get involved in this discussion about street cameras, and I thought I would be and have not gotten involved yet. So I'm not saying it's anyone's fault, but going forward, please, let's get the IT group, you know, myself, whatever, involved in the early stages.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Motion.
I have a motion by Councilman Johnston, seconded by, motion, Councilman Baudier, all in favor.
Yea.
Any opposed? We have five yays, zero nays. Motion passes. Public hearing is now open. If you would state your name and address, and if you would do the timer again. Thank you, Councilman Wheeler.
Robert Johnson, 6735 Riverside Drive. Thank you, Mr. Kraus, for your comments. They were very scary that we have an eight-year-old accounting software that hasn't been updated, and we just voted to accept electronic payments. I've had my credit card information compromised. I've had to change credit cards. I can't believe we're doing, accepting electronic payments in the face of the information. It is too bad that this council did not have this framework, the mayor did not have this framework, to consider electronic payments. But a framework is correct. We don't, we're not voting for Red Flex. We're solely voting to give the mayor the power, if she chooses to use it, to go through with an RFP process, to select a vendor, go through those negotiations, and decide if she wants to go forward with cameras to fix these problems. To our problems, I support giving the mayor the power. I think this is the first time council, the mayor seems to be refusing a power that council wants to give her. Unique situation. But I hope they give her the power, and I hope she acts on the power and gives speed cameras due consideration. And if they're not what we need, I hope she implements what we need to solve our problems. Thank you.
And before we proceed with, address the council, did I seek your professional input about taking online payments?
Yes.
And the company that we were looking at was Incode, the Tyler Technologies, the same company that you said is excellent.
Correct.
And that we did do a cost-benefit analysis, and that we did assess the IT situation on how that the city could safely go down this avenue and protect everyone's identities and payments, et cetera.
Right. Since the way we'll implement it is Tyler Technologies will take the payment, they have an extremely secure server, and they guaranteed, you know, the security of the payments, yes.
Okay, thank you.
That's the way it'll be implemented.
Thank you. We will continue to address the council.
John Rain, Three Rent Pass. I am a witness, I live along the River Road, Three Rent Pass. I witness every day speeders coming down Riverside Drive. I witness people passing double-yellow line because they don't want to wait behind somebody that's doing a speed limit, even five miles over the speed limit. I witnessed dump trucks speeding down Riverside Drive. I witnessed 18-wheelers speeding down Riverside Drive. I have seen in the newspaper and on the news, police officers getting shot for pulling people over because they were speeding or they were breaking some kind of law. These cameras won't get shot. I don't know too much about the cameras. I have personally a three-quarter-ton long bed truck that I have to back out onto River Road, and there's a blind spot there because it's a shed that comes out, grandfathered in, comes out past the normal 10 feet that you're supposed to be away from the River Road. And I have to back out. Now, somebody going 30 miles an hour might see me backing out. Somebody doing 40 miles an hour is going to hit me. Somebody doing 60 miles an hour, I'm going to be in the hospital, they're probably going to be in the morgue. Now, if it's a dump truck, I'm going to be in the morgue. But something needs to be done. Now, this ordinance, I believe, just gives the mayor the ability to do something here, and maybe something will be worked out, you know? Maybe there can be some negotiations with Ellis. We don't need to finalize, this is it, this is, you know, this is the end of it. This needs to be brought up. This gives the mayor the power to do something. And later on, something needs to be done. If somebody gets injured or hurt when Harahan knows they have a problem, are we going to be in court? Are you going to be sued because of a problem here? I think that's probably going to cost a lot more than cameras. So even, you know, even the guy that talked said that there was a threat. When they put up the signs that this is a camera viewed, or whatever they call it, that everything slows down. Well, people right now have, there's no law right now. They don't, they ignore the 20 mile an hour speed limit. They are flying down Riverside Drive. This is a residential community. And I know people don't like that. People want to go flying all over the place because they're always late, they're on the phone. But if you're doing 77 miles an hour and you texting somebody, somebody's going to get killed. And are we waiting for that? You know, so something needs to be done. So, thank you all.
We're going to take a brief reading.
We are resuming the city council meeting.
Very good. Thank you.
Please proceed, state your name and address, please.
Jason 7204 Stonely for the third time. One thing I will say, and I noticed it earlier, is, and not to make too much light of this, but you know, I know a great way to raise some funds based off the lawsuit we were just threatened with. On the one hand, it does make sense to look at any option that will raise revenue, really. What you guys are looking at today is just a framework that authorizes somebody to take an action. No offense, I can't see the future. I don't know if anybody here can, please talk to me because I got some lottery ideas, okay? But if you can't see the future, really, then why not pass this so that she has the framework in case something does change? Maybe the residents of, you know, Riverside Drive, we all start to jump up and down, scream real, real loud, and you say, you know what, we're going to shut you guys up, here's your camera, we're happy. She needs the authority to do that. All this does is create the framework by which she can act. And that's a powerful thing. The RFP, it was mentioned earlier, RFP and RFQ, or I think you mentioned it. That process, you've been through it before, I'm sure, no doubt. You know that it's an intensive process. You put out the proposal, whatever company that you guys want to ultimately select, they have to accept your contract terms, they have to accept what you want to put in there. And you can put the $10,000 or $50,000, whatever the heck you want to do. You can put that in there. You can put in the indemnification so there's no threat of lawsuits. You can put in ironclad protections for Harahan. And no offense, Harahan ain't got much money. You all don't have very big budgets. They do. Let them protect Harahan. That's what they're for. That's what those contracts are for. I can promise one thing. When you're dealing with large companies, they have huge budgets, and when they're, he said, he has 200 municipal entities that he deals with, that their company deals with? 200? There are others that may be even bigger. I don't know. There's the one that does New Orleans. Imagine how deep their pockets are if little old Harahan were ever sued. Infinite practically, practically infinite. So when you're looking at today's ordinance, look at it as a framework for the RFP, RFQ, that process, so that she can at least begin to look at it. Because without this, without this, your hands are tied, no matter what happens in the future. And I don't think that's right, especially when citizens like me, we want them. So, thank you.
As you know, we live on Three Rent Pass. We have big windows on the side of our house, and it is amazing what we see in those windows. It's amazing that we see people passing up another person with a double-yellow line. It's amazing. It's just speeding so fast that you can barely even see the car when it passed the window. That's how fast some of these people are going. And I think that we need to really get some cameras or something up there to make people realize you need to slow down. I believe the people who don't speed won't have a problem with it. But these people that are passing through to get from one place to another, which a lot of them are, don't really care about the residents. But I can tell you, when I'm in my backyard, which is on the side of River Road, I'm even afraid to play with a ball or anything because if a ball shot out on that road and somebody was doing about 70, they could not stop. Then the ball would scare them, they would think it was in some object, and they would swerve, and they could come right into our yard. I mean, it's super, super dangerous. You know, and I think that this is very, very important. And like Tim Walker said, Chief Tim Walker said before, that, you know, 70% of the people who stops for traffic, they have to rest, and we're living in a very dangerous time right now. And I think it's, we shouldn't even be putting our police officers to have to deal with this. And the chances that, they care police officers all the time in the United States now, it's terrible. So I definitely think this is a big issue, and I think it needs to be addressed, and they need to be slowing down. And I would like to say again, Mayor Masoli, that we did, we did talk about the, and that permit that Wood Materials has, I just...
That's fine. No, I'm sorry.
What Wood Materials has, the city, Line 14, I think it is, they have to check with the city. So I'm encouraging you, please, please, stand up and don't let them renew their permit for 2017.
We've got to stick to this topic.
Oh, I'm very sorry. Well, anyway, okay. So again, I'll stick to the cop, I didn't realize that, I forgot, I'm sorry. So I do say that we need something out there. We do need something out there to help us. Thank you.
Terry Valenti, 191 Colonial Club Drive. No one here disputes that we want our children and our residents to be safe. No one does. But are we saying that our police officers are not going to do any traffic because they might get shot? I don't understand that rationale. You know, a child on Riverside Drive could be killed by a drunk driver driving at 20 miles an hour, and a speed cam, or 30 miles an hour speed camera is only going to give them a ticket. We need our officers out there. We read the police chief's messages that he puts up on the police department. We know that traffic stops often, often nab people that are wanted for crimes. There's DWIs involved, there's drugs involved oftentimes. The people that spoke to me said they want our police officers to feel supported, they want them to be safe, and I'm telling you, as a wife of a person who was on the police force and shot in the line of duty, no police officer should be on the streets of Harahan alone, patrolling. Ever, never. And our police chief needs to use the reserve to make sure that when that person's out there, there is somebody backing him up. Or someone that's sitting in the office needs to be backing him up. This is not about wanting unsafe conditions. They speed on my street, too. They speed on Oak Street. They speed on Hickory. People have said they speed on Bailey. They speed on all streets, and it's because right now, for whatever reason, whether it is bad administration or just financial strain, we don't have officers that are giving tickets that the Harahan citizens are known, have known in the past, you will get a ticket. You come blazing down Riverside Drive, you're going to rear-end somebody because Harahan residents, when they hit Riverside Drive, are going to hit their brakes because the cops were always there ticketing. So whatever we have to do to solve our police department problems, let's solve it. Chief, I would love for you to put up a message. I think you would have support. But don't give a thinly veiled tax to the citizens who don't want it. You're between a rock and a hard spot because you've got Ms. Hewitt pushing you to do this for her. You've got her pushing you, saying that, putting words in your mouth that you spearheaded this with her, and I've heard you say you just don't have a problem with it. You need to stand up and tell your citizens, do you support it? Do you want it, or do you just not have a problem with it? Is she going to withhold funds that you're asking for in your budget if you don't go along with this camera? Thank you. Thank you.
I'll try to get closer to the mic this time. Charlie Buckles, 202, Seven Set Drive, Lafayette, Louisiana. I appreciate your comments on process, and that's really hitting in our sweet spot there. But I will say this, your ordinance, as it reads, is a civil violation, so there will not be any court interfaces needed from that standpoint. But our system, or at least our system, operates completely in the web, so as far as any additional hardware or anything like that, as long as there's a computer there, in fact, we even provide an Apple-based system for them to review that. So my point is, these are the type of things we cover in the business rules. I would ask you to check other cities that are using it. You'll find that there is very, very little that's needed from infrastructure from the city. All you really need is an internet. Now, if you've got DSL dial-up connections or something like that, it may take a while to view some of that stuff. But other than that, everything is secure, we have off-site backup, everything is at the highest level. We're even a strategic partner with Inlet. So that's some of the things we would love to talk to you, at least give you the basis of how to go about putting that, that structure together. But I just want to kind of clear that up.
Tommy Buddy, 7208, Stoneley Drive. There's nothing that I haven't said that I could say right now, except I'm going to ask everybody again, take some action, let's not drag this out for 12 more months. If you do this, and it doesn't work, you can undo it. It's not forever. But it's a quick fix, won't cost the city any money, it'll, it'll, it'll generate revenue, for sure. If you take these statistics, which were generated by Jefferson Parish Traffic Centers, which I believe must have been a slow period, because I see more than this, maybe it's just my perception. But you take this and you start generating it about $100 to $200 net per ticket, and see what kind of revenue it produces, now you've got the money to hire more policemen, another fireman. You've got, you've got an income stream for teaching people to act properly. River Road is, is, is a scary situation. And, and I appreciate the problems on Colonial. But Ms. Valenti, you live right by Jefferson Highway, you've got a traffic light, you, most of the traffic on Colonial's turning, they're not going by your house at 70 miles an hour. They are going by my house at 70 miles an hour. And I appreciate all of your concerns and respect them, but you're not living with the problem that the residents on Riverside are living. You're not walking in our shoes. You're walking in a different set of shoes, and while you have a good perspective for living two or three houses away from a lighted intersection where nobody's flying through it at 70 miles an hour. You just don't appreciate our concerns, because you don't live it every day. It's, it's just, you're not there. So just please, vote for this tonight, give the mayor the opportunity, and let's, let's try to negotiate a contract that works for the city, solves the problem, generates much-needed revenue only from people who break the law. I don't want the chief to stop patrolling on Riverside Drive. I'd like just him to continue that, maybe even increase it, because people will find out where the cameras are, and they'll, they'll drive through it slow, and then they'll speed fast. It's human nature. And I agree with Ms. Valenti that there's a lot of criminals caught in Harahan over the years by traffic stops. So I don't want the police department not to make traffic stops. I just want to supplement their activities, generate some revenue for the city, and make Riverside Drive safer for the residents. Thank you.
Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion.
I have a motion by Councilman Johnston, seconded by Councilman Wheeler, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have five ayes, zero nays. Council discussion. I'd like to ask Chief Walker, do you support this ordinance?
I've said it 100 times, I have no opposition to it.
But do you support it?
I'm just answered. I've said I'm not opposed to it. It's something for y'all to vote on. I don't vote on it. I have a problem, the city has a problem with people. I'm not opposed to it. It's up to the council to vote on it.
As the chief law enforcement officer?
I've asked my question 100 times. Every time I've come to council meeting and brought up, I have not opposed to it.
How does this ordinance affect your utilization of officers?
It doesn't affect them at all.
Will you need to have officers viewing the cameras, monitoring the cameras, paying overtime for the cameras, details, watching the cameras, et cetera?
My appreciation, I'm not familiar with how the whole thing operates. I think the films are reviewed. There would probably be somebody on an overtime basis to review the films. But as far as watching the cameras, I don't see any need for anybody to watch the cameras.
So to re-
And as far as our, as far as what we do now on patrol, it's not going to change at all.
Do you have an idea of how much overtime would be required to view the tape?
I guess it depends on how many citations it issued. I don't know.
That, that-
It would depend on how many citations it would issue, and that would be how many, which time would take to review.
So, the budgeted overtime, you could first, easily foresee to go up, to, to-
Possible.
And did you, with this ordinance pending, did you calculate that into your overtime numbers for the 2017 budget?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
Council discussion?
Yeah, I need to make one clarification that I'll talk a little bit about, when Mr. Buddy was talking with me about earlier. First one, first thing is, is Ms. Johnson sent me an email earlier, because it was a little confusing. They have two different articles, one from, one from Tom Speaker Eun, one's from Advocate. It kind of contradicts itself, but it's just the same thing I said at the last meeting, was that, I'm not in favor of the cameras. I'm not in favor of the cameras citywide. I feel that the citizens don't want it citywide. Now, with the other one, with the Advocate telling me that I want to do what's right for the neighborhood, I stressed that also last meeting, is that I wanted to look at Riverside specifically, because I felt that the whole city didn't want the, the cameras. I talked to Mr. Buddy today, I told him my concerns about being citywide, he told me I should get with the city attorney. So I got with the city attorney. He worked up a amendment that we could do to narrow it down to Riverside, but the problem, he says, in his personal opinion, is that you narrow it down to one street, nobody's going to bid on it. That, that was his opinion on it. That nobody's going to come back with a, you know, bid on the RFPs, because nobody just wants one street in the city, they want the whole city. That was his opinion. With, with taking his advice, I really want to do whatever I can for y'all, but I wouldn't be able to vote on it. They have a couple of options, I see. A millage came up, but the problem is, a millage wouldn't take effect. If it gets voted next year, it's not going to take effect for, until 2017. So you're not going to get that money right away. The only two options we have is to, well, I have, because I'm not for this aspect of it, is to either give the, the police more money, so they can hire the people to do their enforcements, or look at, try and look at maybe getting stop signs on Riverside. It might be a little tricky to get on Riverside, because of course, as Mr. Johnson knows, we have to work with Jefferson Parish in that, in that process, because you had to email them to get some information on that. So that's, that could be a possibility. As far as, like I said, the cameras, I, I just, if I make that amendment, I'm going by what Mr. Buresh had told me, is that he, he feels nobody's going to bid, and it's, it's going to be pointless, because nobody's going to bid, and it's just a blank ordinance that just sits there. So that's, that's all.
Anyone else?
I just want to say that I've lived in Harahan for over 25 years. I live on a busy street, I live on Colonial Club, right in the middle between Jefferson Highway and River Road, and it's very annoying, the, the people who speed on that street, it's infuriating. So I definitely can sympathize with the people on River Road. I'll, I'll just say this, I've been here over 25 years, and it's only in the last two years that I did, that I stopped telling people who were coming to my house for the first time not to speed. If you speed, you're going to get a ticket. I don't have to tell them that anymore, because there, there's nobody out there patrolling and writing tickets. And my solution is to have the police write tickets, and the chief and I have already discussed this, I said it at the last meeting, we disagree about how many officers he says he's down. According to the UCR site, he's not, he may be down one officer, and I just don't see how one officer down can make that big a difference in the revenues that we've been getting from tickets.
Anyone else?
Chief, I, I have some things. And so I, I don't mean to put you on the spot, and this is no disrespect at all. You and I have talked probably six times over the last 10 or 12 months about this process, how to educate ourselves on the vendor and how it works. 11 or 12 months ago, when we reached out to Mr. Charlie Buckles, because they're a local company, because our surrounding municipalities use Red Flex, we wanted just to get educated on the process. He met with us for about two hours in your office, with the mayor present. I don't remember who else was present, I don't know if it was Captain Adams or Ms. Whittle. And they went through this whole presentation on how it works.
Right.
So, we do know how it works. I mean, I remember what I was educated on that day. And, and I know the mayor brought up about overtime. I see Officer Moody here, and I know there's been some discussion, and I don't know if I'm out of line to say this, but he, I believe he has told us that I will be the one. I am an officer, and I will be the one to do this. And I will offer that to the police department. So if that is all above board, and that can work, and that's compliant, then there is no overtime. And there is no overtime that you need a budget for 2017. But what I do know is, in the budget hearings over the last two weeks, and the, and the conversations that you and I have had, and you've had with the other council members, and the letters that you've sent us, and what you've put on Facebook to let the citizens know what's going on, I think you know best, other than anybody else in this room, or any other citizen in this city, what the situation is of the Harahan Police Department. Not Councilman Bitten, because she's reading something online. I think you, I think you live it every day. Your staffing, your payroll, your overtime, your vacation, your comp time, people on the streets, your stats, and you say every day, the thing that's important to you is the safety of your citizens, and I'm quite sure it's the safety of your citizens. So you and I have had several conversations about this, and it, it went away for about six months. And then you and I talked again about three months ago, and if I don't remember verbatim the conversation, it went something like this. Dana, have you talked to Red Flex lately? And I said, no, I haven't. And he said, you know, maybe we should just reach out again, because I think this is something we should look into, and that we need this.
I ran to him at a chief's conference, and he brought it up.
And so, I did. It's been resurrected. It's here. Everyone has the opportunity to ask their questions and be educated. I'm not doing anything that's on my agenda. I, I ran to be a councilperson. I'm here for the 10,000 citizens, not myself, not because I live on Stoneley and I back up to Riverside Drive. If, if, if someone like Eric Shattiland came tonight about Colonial, and we know there's a problem on Oak, and we know there's a problem on Jefferson Highway, and it's right here where, where the problems are, there was a study, we have facts. This isn't subjective, this isn't assumptions, they're facts. There's a problem. Chief's down officers. I believe him, because he runs his department, that he's down officers. I know that the other fact is that the mayor's asking us to push through the amendments to the 2016 budget, to take almost $90,000 out of your budget.
Correct.
I, I am trying to help form a solution, because that's what I'm here for. And I'm trying my best to educate my formal council members and the city as to why it's been brought forward, and why I have sponsored the ordinance. I appreciate Mr. Buresh, who's on the phone, calling from Philadelphia, and he's an hour past us and staying on the phone to help. He wrote this ordinance, he looked over it and over it, trying to make sure all the details were in here. So I, I don't know what else to do. I was here to help. The ordinance is here. My fellow council members, I hope you can support it. I think if you don't, I think it's a vote that you're not supporting the safety of the city, and our citizens, and our police department, and I implore you to make a good decision tonight.
City Attorney Buresh, since Ms. Hewitt, Councilwoman Hewitt brought you up about writing the ordinance, do you have any additional comments that you would like to state for the record?
Well, you know, the ordinance is modeled on the city of Gretna's ordinance. Now, their ordinance deals with red light cameras, so ours is tailored to deal with the, the speeding issue. And, yes, that's, I just want to confirm, that is what I told Councilman Johnson earlier today. I think that, you know, if you're restricted to just one or two streets in the city, nobody's going to bid on it, and then every, you know, the CR, even if you do get an RFP, and somebody bids on it, you're going to have to amend the RFP if you want to expand the operation to anything other than those two streets. So, you know, I, I guess I take some pride of authorship in the ordinance, I think it does what it needs to do. The question as to whether if this is a civil or a criminal matter, is one that is, you know, still being debated by reasonable people, but the better practice these days seems to be that it would be civil fine, and that you, you need to have some sort of due process procedure in place. Now, whether that's a civilian hearing officer, or a police officer, a police officer, if it's strictly a civil matter, if it's not going to go on anybody's criminal record, it would appear to me that an administrative hearing officer would be sufficient, but I mean, that, you know, that means you have to hire somebody else, you know, you have to hire a new employee. So, yeah, I, I did help draft the thing, and, and I think, you know, in the future, if we need something tweaked, it can be tweaked easily enough, but that's my only comment to it. As to the other, it's something I commend to the, to the legislators.
Now, the Section 3, under Article 4, Section 3A, it says, "Consists of system for electronically measuring the speed of a motor vehicle, a still camera system, and full motion video camera system installed to work in conjunction with an electronically operated traffic control signal." Does that then allow for red light cameras, basically?
Well, that's, that is, I left that in the ordinance, but the ordinance is drafted with, you know, strictly with respect to, to speed cameras, and I left that in because I don't know the technology that Red Flex or anybody else might be using, and how they, you know, how they trigger this. You know, for all I know, they can place these things in a certain spot before red lights, so that they can tell who's going to run through them at a certain speed, I don't know. So, but I left that in there, because that's a technical aspect that, that I just don't have the expertise on. But this ordinance is basically designed to deal with speed enforcement, not red light enforcement.
Okay. And, but, I'm just asking, just that, my simple reading of that section would potentially allow red light cameras, that it could be interpreted that way, potentially, or?
No, what I'm telling you is that this ordinance was, was modeled on what Gretna has, and what Gretna has gives the red light camera, but I'm not sure if the way that that particular sentence is structured, the equipment itself can do both. You understand what I'm saying?
I see. Okay. And it also, under Section 50-106, Court Management Fund, it speaks to, "The penalties, fines, and fees collected from the imposition of civil liability under this article shall be deposited into the Court Management Fund. Funds deposited into this Court Management Fund shall be expended first for the costs of the system, payment to the vendor, operator of the system, public relations, and general implementation of the program." So basically, they get paid first, and Harahan second?
That's not the way I read that, and I'm not sure what Gretna is doing with respect to that, or, you know, if this goes forward, this, this enabling ordinance, I think we should get some, some model RFPs, see how we should put this out, but I, I take that up from Gretna, because the way that that section reads to me, all of the funds go into this Court Management Fund, and then from that, you pay everybody else. You pay for the vendor, you pay for the, the administrative costs, so that's the way it read, it read to me.
Okay.
I, I didn't understand this, I didn't understand what Gretna had to be what New Orleans used to do, I don't know what New Orleans is doing now, but New Orleans used to send all the money to the, to the vendor, and then they would send the money to the city. The way that Gretna's reads to me, it goes to the city first, and then the city pays for all of its expenses out of that.
Any other-
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Mr. Buresh, you know, it's almost like the cart before the horse, but we have to, we have to pass an ordinance to give the mayor the ability to enter into RFP and then a contract. That's not true.
Is it?
No, no, I think that is the case. I think you need, I, I think you need to, to define the right of, because essentially what you're doing with this- doing with this is creating a set of penalties, and only the legislature can do that.
Okay. So, Mr. Bures?
By creating the penalty, you're also creating a method by which to impose the penalty. We're going to do it this way. We're going to impose this penalty. It's almost as if you came up with a fee schedule for letting your grass grow too high, or letting garbage accumulate on your lawn.
Well, I was, I was basically referring to the ability to send out an RFP in a broader sense. That's what I was referring to.
Yeah, I think you need this in place first, just as if you were doing a general, you know, health ordinance that said, you know, you can't let your grass grow over 36 inches high. Well, you know, that's the offense, letting the grass grow over 36 inches, and the way that you enforce that, well, Jefferson Parish will send out a private contractor to go out and cut that lot. So, yeah, it's a, I think we've got the cart and the horse in the right order here.
Okay.
First, you do the enabling ordinance, and then, based on the enabling ordinance, the mayor can go out and say, "Okay, now I'm going to let an RFP," to see who can be responsive to enforcing this ordinance.
Okay. So, Mr. Bures, I'm not going to keep you much longer and belabor this issue, but again, what all I was, where I was trying to get to the point is that this is a framework. This gives the mayor the ability to decide if, after discussions with the chief, and they can come to a common grounds on budget constraints, millages, police officer needed, funding needed, and how this could play a part in a positive way for our city for safety and funding, that once a contract was starting to be negotiated, we could then go back and edit this ordinance to meet the terms of the contract? Yes, or no?
Well, that's, that smacks of trying to tailor the ordinance to meet a specific contract. I think the better practice is to, look, you go back and rework the ordinance if you find that nobody wants to respond to your RFP, and then you find out the reasons why.
Okay.
But I would generally think that it's somewhat suspect to take RFPs, select one of them, and then come back and tailor the ordinance, because that particular responder wants this, that, or the other.
Okay. So, it's frowned upon.
Okay, I understand. So, I guess what I'm trying to get at, though, and I just, I'll just ask you to reiterate it one more time, that this is step one in the process that needs to occur, correct?
Wait, I didn't hear that.
She, I asked you, Mr. Bures, that this is step one in the process, in that this first step needs to occur to be able to go forward?
Yes. In my professional opinion, this is step one, and you absolutely have to do this before you can move to the next step.
Thank you, Mr. Bures.
Okay, thank you. And we're going to, any other further council discussion?
I've never been in favor of traffic cameras, and it's, I really don't know where we are at with this, the whole deal. I'm still not in favor of traffic cameras, but I'm going to support this ordinance, because I'm not going to close the door, because I'm going to listen to my citizens that are asking if they want something, because I think that's what we're supposed to do. However, Councilman Johnson and I had lengthy discussions today, in the meantime, between here, and maybe looking into some RFPs, even putting one out there, which probably is going to be a little bit of a timely process, that we're going to bust buds, we're going to meet with the chief, we're going to look at budget constraints, we're going to look at every single thing we possibly can in order to put police officers on the street, because that is my first, and I believe Councilman Johnson's first priority here. But I'm not going to close the door to not helping you guys. But I want to let you know that it is a last resort for me, but I will always keep it open.
Any other comments? The comments that I would like to say is that I have received an unbelievable amount of phone calls, emails, conversations about automated traffic enforcement. It's been, those who are for it are very passionate, as you witnessed tonight, and can hear their sincere pleas. And those who are against it are quite adamant as well, and have some very strong feelings as well. To state for the record, though, it is overwhelming response of our citizens that have contacted me, and that are adamantly opposed, in general, to such an ordinance. That's what's gotten back to me as the mayor of the city, and I thought was worth saying. I have also looked at many of the names of that list that we were given, whether it was the people who knocked and found people to sign for support of the ordinance, and the almost 260 to 270 who have gone online. Some of the late names online, the people who petitioned against it, some of the names don't belong there, but the majority do. Past council members are on that. We recognize many of the names that were on there. I think it says a lot that we had 260, 270 citizens respond, who were willing to put their names down to have their voices heard. So, I just want to commend everyone who's been willing to speak up and state their position. Anything further? Do I have a motion to proceed with the vote to approve the ordinance?
Motion.
What?
Motion.
I have a motion by Councilman Johnston, seconded by Councilman Wheeler. All in favor to approve the ordinance?
Yea, yea.
Any opposed?
No.
I have three yays, two nays. Ordinance passes. The nays were Councilman Johnston and Councilman Benton. I would like to take this moment to ask to have a motion to defer voting on proposed ordinances 2016-21 and 2016-22 to the regular city council meeting on December 15, 2016, at 7:30. These ordinances amend the 2016 budget and adopt the projected 2017 budget. I have a motion by Councilman Johnston.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Baudier. All in favor.
Yea.
Any opposed? We have five yays, zero nays. Those ordinances will be on for the December meeting.
No ordinances for introduction, no old business and new business. Police Chief Walker's requesting permission to hold the annual...
Hold on just a moment. Does anyone need City Attorney Bures?
No.
Gilbert?
I feel so connected.
Well, Gilbert, I'm trying to get you to thank me for getting you off the phone. Okay?
I'm just joking.
If something should happen now, and before you leave the country, we'll give you a call. Bon voyage, and have a good time.
Thank you, y'all have a good night.
All right, thank you. All righty, bye.
Police Chief Walker's requesting permission to hold the annual Christmas parade on Saturday, December 17, at 12:00 PM. The parade route starts on Hoard Street and continues westbound on Jefferson Highway, disbanding at Falls Street.
Do I have a motion to grant permission?
Motion.
I have a motion by Councilman Johnston, seconded by
Second.
Councilman Baudier. All in favor?
Yea.
Any opposed? We have five yays, zero nays. Permission is granted. We will now do address the council. Anyone who would like to come up and speak, please come up to address the council.
Captain Adams, Harrahann Police...
I'm sorry, Dan, because I hung up.
I won't take three minutes, ma'am.
...go back to my duty. All right, go ahead.
That's fine.
Thank you.
Captain Adams, Harrahann Police Department. Everybody has their opinions, good, bad, indifferent. Doesn't really matter, okay? It's because those veterans that came before us currently and in the future, nobody said one thing about Veterans Day tomorrow. I just want to personally thank all the veterans, past, current, and future. Thank you from the bottom of my heart.
Robert Johnson, 6735 Riverside Drive. I'm glad the framework, the ordinance, which would be the first step for the framework for speed cameras passed, but that's probably as far as it goes. I haven't read the ordinance. I do not believe that it mandates the administration to take any action. The administration is not in favor of this. I do not think the administration will take action to implement speed cameras. She doesn't, to my knowledge, she doesn't have to. But I did send an email to the mayor, and I asked that she inform the community tonight as to her thoughts about how she would make Riverside Drive safe. As I told her, I care little about how you fix a problem, but I care greatly that you take prompt and effective action to fix the problem. It appears the police department budget is being, there's an attempt to reduce it to the balance of this year. Maybe we can do more policing. I don't know if there's, it seems like that would take money. We have not heard what the mayor proposes to make Riverside Drive safe. That is her duty. That is what we elected her for, to provide for our safe, safety, and welfare.
Hi, Evelyn Ream. I don't, thank you so much, so very, very much for passing the ordinances on the hours of operation. We appreciate you guys so much. I don't know, I'm asking you, Mayor, to please sign it as quickly as possible. I think you can go up to nine days, but I'm asking you to please sign it as quickly as possible. And I apologize, I did, I guess I was outside, and I came in, and I shouldn't have brought up the other comment, but on the tracker cameras. But it's, please, I'm asking you so much. I know that we have a court date, Harrahann's a court date with about the mulching and composting in December. We plan on going to that meeting. I'm asking you to use the authority that you have to stop Wood Materials permit if he doesn't get the mulching and compost out of Harrahann. So, I'm glad that you are aware that you have that authority, and I'm hoping that you will take every extent you can to withhold his permit, because you have that ability for 2017, because that is the only way that you will get rid of that mulching compost, and I encourage you to do that for us. Thank you.
Hello, John Ream, Three Rent Pass. It's been a long night. But on that wood materials, we appreciate y'all voting, and thank you for it. This will not put Wood Materials out of business. This is only limiting their time of operation to daytime period when they should be, and they have three other sand yards, and I think Remy said four other sand yards, but I'm not sure where the other one is.
Four altogether.
Four altogether, okay. Well, he ran, the Department of Natural Resources had a cease dredging order on him. For two months, he stopped running his nighttime operations. It didn't, he didn't go broke. He ran from the West Bank. He ran from Wagamah. So, it didn't hurt him at all. He doesn't need to run from this pit at nighttime. He just wants to get away with it. He just wants to down Harrahann, I guess. I don't know what the problem is with him, you know? He doesn't want to be, a company doesn't want to be a good neighbor. I can't, you know, y'all see the sand in the morning going down the river road, the sand fog. Now, when the wind's blowing this way, guess where the sand's going? Right into the community, right into Tim's swimming pool. So, you know, we have to put up with this. This is something that, this is a company that works back there. He needs to listen to the City of Harrahann. He needs to listen to the residents of Harrahann. Well, the company does. So, I appreciate y'all standing up, and thank y'all.
Tommy Buddy, 7208 Stoneley Drive, Harrahann. I want to thank the council for their deliberations and passing this tonight. And now, Mayor, I'm going to ask you to, within a very reasonable period of time, report back publicly on the web, the Harrahann website, so we know what your position is, because right now, the ball's in your court. And I wouldn't ask you to say it tonight, but I would ask you to do it within a week. I mean, you've been involved in all these discussions, and you've probably got some feel for where you're going with this. You've got a petition that you believe is mostly residents of Harrahann, and not one signature, but I'm not going to say that it's not valid. When it says New Orleans, I don't know these people. If you know a name, they may live in Harrahann, but it says New Orleans. But again, they don't live on Riverside. So, I'm going to say what Robert said. You need to do something. It's your sole responsibility right now to come up with a plan that's effective, and if you've got the money to do it with, by spending money on police officers, it'll probably generate more than the cost of the police officers used to. When I moved to Harrahann, the police department rode a lot of tickets, generated a lot of money. You had to spend money to make money. People didn't speed as much. That was, it was known as a speed trap. Everybody in the area, on the West Bank, in New Orleans, in Canada, all knew it was, Harrahann was a speed trap, but we didn't, we didn't have as much speeding. So, I think, I think the traffic camera is the most cost-efficient way to do it. I'm a CPA, Chief Financial Officer. I make decisions like this all day long. It's just my opinion. If you've got a better plan, I'd like to hear it. If you have no plan, I'd like to hear that, too. But I think it's incumbent upon you, within about a week, to let us know where you're going with it, please, because it's been months and months and months, and we see issues get dragged out for years. I don't want to equate these two issues that y'all dealt with tonight, two difficult issues. I don't want to say one's more important than the other. They're both difficult issues. Y'all have taken action as a board tonight, and I applaud you on both counts. But, Mayor, now it's in your court, so I'm going to ask you, tell us where, what your plans are, because it's in your court.
Still, Jason Bruzek, 7204 Stoneley. What can I say? That's a hard act to follow. He's right. The ball is now in your court, Madam Mayor, and I don't know anybody here. I'm new to Harrahann. I've only been here for two years, and I'm shocked, because I've never seen, and I apologize, Tim, I apologize, because I've not seen cops always out there on Riverside Drive. I've never gotten to see that. I would love to see it, but you can't put people out there 24/7, can you?
Go to the facility, go in.
And if you want to change, you want to change people's behavior, you got to have the 24/7. And so, I'm kind of shocked that anybody would vote against a framework to give you the authority to do what you need to do. You commented about only having Riverside Drive, that people won't bid on it. Well, why don't you try? Give it a shot. I did the math. I have it right here. If a single camera is out there, and it, based upon the numbers that are all the way up and around here, 882 cars in a given 24-hour period of time, speeding more than 20 miles an hour, that generates $1,407.45 an hour for the city. $1,400 an hour. That's pretty good. And again, no offense, the police can't be there. They can't do this, but cameras can. And if we put the cameras up there, if we put up that framework, and I believe that somebody probably would bid on that. There's about 20 or 30 different camera companies out there. Some of them will be hungry for this. Put out the RFP. Give it a shot. See what you get. And I offered it last time. I'm offering it again. I will help for free to draft the indemnification provisions, so that Harrahann never has to worry about a lawsuit. Put it on them. He's got infinite pockets. Make him pay for it if there's a lawsuit. That way, there, everybody's fears of lawsuits goes away. Try it. See if it works. It can't hurt, now can it? Think about it. It hurts nothing to give it a shot. It hurts nothing to give it a shot.
Terry Valenti, 191, Colonial Club Drive. I am getting up here to once again thank Mr. Johnston for listening. The reason that we did an online petition is we had very little time to do it. It was the way we could reach the most residents in the small amount of time that we had. And I have to tell you, Mr. Johnston, I disagree with you on many, many issues, but I did know that if I put in your hands a petition from a large number of your constituents, that you would consider it. And 200, even if you struck a few of those names and said 250 against 50, the next-door poll that they took, 100 people took the poll where they could vote for or against. It was 83 to 17 percent, 83 percent against, 17 percent for. I think that the citizens are very upset over the camera issue, and the citizens want speeding to stop. I think the citizens would support possibly a millage. It's been pointed out that a millage wouldn't take place until 2017, but correct me if I'm wrong, but aren't we in the middle of November of 16?
I'm sorry, I had dates wrong.
Oh, I know. I mean, I'm just saying.
18, I apologize.
The revenue, you get the revenue in 2018.
In 2018.
It'll get noted on.
Okay, yeah, somebody said 17, so I thought, well, that's only just a short period of time.
My gears were off, I apologize.
But I think a millage, you know, I supported the fire millage in that past, and I would be willing to support a police millage. I love policemen. I sleep with one every night. My son-in-law, the father of my grandchildren, is a policeman. I am all about police, and their safety is important, but unless, I took a nap and missed something that says that police are afraid to stop speeders and control traffic. I mean, not any policeman that I know says they're afraid of enforcing traffic. I mean, they-
Not happening here.
I'm sorry, what?
We never said that this time.
Well, I know, I know, but a lot of people have brought that up and said, you know, they don't want them to have to pull them over because they might get shot. Well, that person that they pulled over is up to something more than speeding if they're gonna shoot a police officer. We have to depend on our police officers, and yes, their safety is important to us. But anyway, I just want, and I want to thank every one of you for voting on the woods material thing ordinance. That was very courageous. Yes, we're gonna get sued, but it was the right thing to do, and that's awesome that y'all did that, and thank you again.
We will now close, address the council. Secretary's report.
Secretary's report for October. Total revenue, $958,401.81.
Reports. Ms. Hewitt?
No report.
Councilman Johnston?
Just wanted to make correction on that date, because I was just called out for it. It wouldn't be voted on until 17, which you would get the revenue in 18. So, I was wrong on the millage, I apologize for that, that screw-up. Little bit of year difference. But I just wanted to stress about the Riverside situation. I really do feel for you, I do. I wanna do everything that's possible to get there. Cameras, I just couldn't support because of what Bures told me. I know you said, "Just go for it," and I probably should have, probably just put the amendment in and went for it. I probably should have. But, you know, it is, it's too late, a little too late. But I'm planning to get with you, Chief, and we're gonna talk, and hopefully, you know, we could try and get you some more money, or try and figure out a different way of doing, some kind of, that's all.
I'm sorry, we can't take, I'm sorry. Councilman Bodie?
Yes. Fortunately, didn't give you a chance, but I'd like to definitely reach out and thank all veterans. My grandfather was a veteran, was actually shot down in a plane in World War II, MIA for nine days. We still have the parachutes, passed away. He helped raise me most of my life, and he was very close, and although I never had the privilege of joining the military, I've got to live it firsthand with him. You know, I've been reading these Save Harahan comments for quite a while, and I've been trying to hold my tongue, and I'm probably gonna regret saying something about it now, but sometimes Save Harahan awfully seems like destroy Harahan. They make these comments that they have singled each one at a time, you know, Councilman Johnston, Councilman Hewitt, myself, Councilman Wheeler, and now they're jumping on to Councilman, oh, I'm sorry, Chief Walker. You know, sometimes, when I look at this thing, it's really sad. It's really sad that it's a sounding board of just disrespect and just a platform to put people down. You know, we come up here, and we work our butts off, and sometimes we make decisions that we agree with, or that you agree with, and sometimes we don't. We try to do what's best for the citizens of Harahan, but Save Harahan doesn't seem to be in that platform. If you're not aligned with the mayor or Councilman Benton, you're gonna get bashed and destroyed. I just wish that it'd stop it, and let's do something positive with Save Harahan, and let's really try to save Harahan. Come up with some new creative ideas, something ingenious or inventive, and quit using destruction as a platform to try to force and bully your way. It doesn't go work with me, it's never gonna work with me, and I frankly just had enough of it. So, thank you.
Councilman Wheeler? Councilman Wheeler? Do you have any report you'd like to get out?
I'm good.
Councilman Benton?
Captain Adams, you serve in our military.
I do.
And I would like to personally thank you for your service.
Well, thank you, Mayor, for no casting it. I do it because I enjoy serving.
But truly, I have heartfelt admiration for anyone who's willing to do what you do for our country. So, and thank you for speaking from your heart about something so important, especially when we face international threats all the time. Who do we go to? It's always our military, so-
And first responders.
And first responders, but I wanted to tell you that personally. And any other officers or anyone else who works for the city, who serves the military, I'd like to take this time to thank them for their additional service. I also wanna remind everyone that the holiday season is approaching. We will be seeing you at our next city council meeting, that will be after Thanksgiving. So, I'd like to wish everyone a Thanksgiving, very, very happy and safe Thanksgiving. And I want to remind everyone that just because budgets, numbers, deficits can be contentious, can be painful, it doesn't mean that everyone in this room doesn't deeply care about this city and respect what each person, individual, group, department brings to keep it safe, to keep it viable, to keep it solvent, et cetera. It is a very difficult position that this council, elected officials, its employees have been placed in to provide, to do their jobs with very little revenue to support them. And I'm gonna tell you, I've never seen a group of individuals in every single department work harder to make sure that this city flourishes, and I'm proud of everyone in spite of some of the differences, and I'm happy that in the city, that in our city, that we are able to openly communicate and hash it out. So, and I extend that to everyone. So, on that note, we can now pay bills.
Can I report?
Oh, I'm sorry, I did it to you again. I messed you up, I'm sorry. Not anything intentional. I'm sorry.
First of all, I'm gonna just say one thing. I owe nobody anything, and no one owns me. I'm my own person. I run the department best to my ability with my staff, and we're accountable to the public. The stats for October 2016, we had 765 calls for service, 17 auto accidents, we issued 86 citations for 130 violations. We had 10 patrol requests. Arrests for the month, we had 10, I mean, 18, I'm sorry, 18 for narcotics, 33 narcotics charged, 19 felonies, five misdemeanors, nine city charges. Other arrests were 70. Other charges, 130, where there were two felonies, 85 misdemeanors, 18 city, 25 traffic. We had one residential burglary, five larceny thefts, and seven assaults. Thank you.
Did I forget anyone else? So, sorry. Pay the bills.
Bills paid in October, $436,857.64.
Now, we're ready to adjourn. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
I have a motion by Councilman Johnston, seconded by Councilman Hewitt, all in favor.
Yea.
Any opposed? We have five yays, zero nays. We are adjourned.